Okay.
There you go.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. It's April twenty-six, two thousand twenty at four o'clock in the afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Maybe have a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Counselors Olson.
Here.
Novak. Ortholomew. Kupcinski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Five counselors present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. So we're waiting for Counselor Novak. Has anybody heard from her today? Nope. Okay. Did you have something, Peter?
I was just gonna say that I have heard from her by text message, and I think she's planning on being here, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I met, heard from her too, and she plans on being here as far as I know, so.
Thank you, counselors. So Mayor and C, so Business from the Public is next on the agenda. So I have a script to read. Business from the public is for persons wishing to address the council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes after your introduction and tell us why you're here to talk to us. Unless extended by the mayor, council should hold their comments until Business from the Council, all written material has been forwarded to the counselors and entered into the public record. Instructors are getting copies of the public records on the city website under Business from the Public. The following persons have submitted the items for the record. Alana Kennedy, but apparently they've not received. I checked with the city clerk, and we have not received them yet. So if that's, if I'm mistaken, please let me know now, Ms. Kennedy. And then the following persons have signed up to speak. Daniel Dietz from Albany, Sharon Geisler from Albany, and Alana Kennedy from Albany. So the first up is Daniel Dietz. Are you ready to speak to us, sir? Welcome, Counselor Novak.
Hello.
Hello, Daniel.
Hi. So we wrote to counselors last week, but I realized I wasn't able to sign up to speak and submit the contents of our letter. So I'll just give a quick summary of the letter and what we're asking for. Essentially, Sharon, who's here with me and myself, are asking at this time for the council to review some sections of the municipal code. That includes Section seven point eight four, Subpart two twenty through Subpart two fifty. Those are the sections that pertain to what we've been calling the enhanced enforcement area here in Albany. The reason that we're asking for the city to consider reviewing and ultimately striking those sections now is because it's come to our understanding that the, the, those particular subparts of the code are not currently being enforced. And we're looking back on the conversation that came to council originally about those subsections, and we're anticipating updates every six months about the effectiveness of those subparts. I think we've heard from, back from the city maybe once or twice from the city attorney about those subparts. And to my understanding, there has been exactly one person in the three years since the code has come into effect where that, that those subparts have been applied. And so taking all of that into balance, we're also thinking about how these subsections of the code and what they, what they communicate might also be serving to exclude some folks from coming into the, the area defined under statute where we have probably the majority of the churches here in Albany, the, at least quite a few of them find themselves downtown. Those, of course, offer meals, including the one at our church at First Christian, but also the meal at Saint Mary's and other services offered by faith communities. We're also thinking about folks coming downtown to access the courts and legal services, our Legal Aid Services of Oregon office, many of the attorneys who practice here in town. We're thinking about mental health services like Lynn County Mental Health, various counseling and crisis intervention services, and then, of course, recovery services, including Chance and several of our town's AA meetings. So what we're hoping for is that the council will reengage with the issue and hopefully have a meaningful conversation about the pros and cons of these particular subparts of the code. I, our hope is not for this to be any more complicated than it is. It's a pretty narrow subsection that we're looking at. I don't think that, you know, the, these subsections of the code necessarily were going to be able to solve homelessness or, or provide a silver bullet to our law enforcement. In my close reading, I think they actually maybe limit the discretion that law enforcement can use by requiring certain escalation. So hopefully, this isn't seen as an attempt to do anything more than just clean up a few parts of a municipal code that were enacted by the council three years ago and that I think the council could reconsider and, and possibly take a different action at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Really appreciate your feedback to the city, and I did get your letter and I did read it, so thank you very much for that. Now Sharon Geisler, is the guy still pronouncing that correctly?
It's Geisler, as if it had an E rather than an I, and I'm, I'm here just in support of the action that Daniel just described. And then we're both here to answer any questions or, or any further things that you might want to hear from us.
I do apologize for butchering your name. I just winged it, so from now on, it'll be Geisler. I apologize for that.
Yes, thank you.
I have a comment.
We're gonna hold comment till Business from the Council. Alana Kennedy, is that pronounced correctly?
Uh, it's Kenegy.
Kenegy, okay.
But nobody gets it. Nobody gets it. Yeah, I'm not sure what you said, Mayor Johnson. Did you say that my text didn't go through in the submission process?
Well, it says the document was, was submitted, was corrupted and unable to be opened. Alana was. Okay.
Well, if it's desired and written form, I can send it again, just in a text of an email or something.
If you'd like it to be part of the public record, that'd be great.
Say that again?
If you'd like it to be part of the public record, that would be great.
Well, uh, start then.
So tell us what you, what would you like to discuss?
Yeah. Uh, I'm Alana Springer-Kennegy, and thanks for doing what you do and being here. I've been following the joint process of the City Council and the Planning Commission around implementing House Bill two thousand one. I've been following that bill since before it passed the state legislature. So I've read everything on the expanding housing options site. Though I haven't fully dug into the comprehensive plan for Albany and the housing needs and economic analysis, but it looks like that's coming up on y'all's agenda. And if I can be involved in some way, I would definitely commit myself to reading all of those documents. In today's meeting agenda, there was a reference to that housing needs analysis that stated without targeted actions, it is not likely that all of our community's needs will be met. And I share, share this sentiment and the desire to move forward with intentional plans about how we want to grow Albany. I remember being a kid when the first three mansions went up near my mixed residential neighborhood in North Albany. And in the past twenty years, I've seen a lot of large homes become a large trend. Now thirty-two years old and have been paying attention to the land and homes that go up for sale in the area since two thousand fifteen. In two thousand fifteen, I had the great fortune to get a mortgage on a duplex with the monetary support of my parents on the same street that I grew up in. I consider homeownership to be a great fortune. Even if that wasn't the way that it used to be, I feel that I am in the minority of my colleagues, peers, and friends. We've got really low vacancy rates and rising house prices. And the people who can afford the homes around me are not the people who work here. It's the out-of-state licensed place, the main street, lots of fences separating what in the past has been community. There's still community there, but there's a lot more fences. I'm concerned that the market will continue to skew towards the demand for the high, high-end homes because there's no shortage of people wanting to live here, wanting to come here from different places. Um, okay, I'm gonna skip ahead to my. I guess one thing that I, so I'm an entrepreneur and a small business owner, and I want us to keep in mind that what creates jobs and a resilient economy is people. And that people are most able to innovate when they have space to work and a home base from which to build their ideas and contribute to community. And that I want to push us to be creative with how we use things, even like planned development to incorporate small houses.
Thank you much, Alana. I'm a small business owner myself, so I totally understand where you're coming from. So thank you for that. Could you please go ahead and send your information? It'd be greatly appreciated so the council can read it.
Yeah, which, which address should I send it to?
Who's on here? Matt Agate? What, what's your address does she send it to?
She can send that to cityclerk@cityofalbany.net.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Matthew. Matt. Next agenda item, comprehensive plan, development code priorities. The Director Blaine will be speaking to us today on pages two, three, eleven, and they're seeking direction. So Director Blaine.
Thank you, Mayor. Can anyone hear me? Okay. Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, council. For those of you that have been on council for a while, this will be a bit of a familiar exercise for you in that in two thousand seventeen, we also went through a prioritization process for planning. So I am not going to go through in comprehensive detail all, all the information that I provided in the memo. I'm gonna assume that you had the time to read that, and then I'm gonna let the council take some time to deliberate and talk about the individual items and your thoughts on, on priorities. But I do want to give a bit of a, of a brief introduction before I do turn that over. One of the reasons this, this exercise is important is that it's very helpful for staff, for us to understand where the priorities of the Planning Commission and the council fall so that we focus our efforts in the right areas while we're trying to be good stewards of the resources that are provided to us through the budget process. We're going through a bit of the changing of the guards as we respond to one, my departure, and then also the building of a rebuilding of our Community Development Department, a standalone department. So you see Matthew Rutgers on here tonight. Peter has selected him to lead the Community Development Department. You're all familiar with Matthew and the good work that he does, and, and he'll be excellent in that position. I also would like to introduce to you Scott White, who hopefully you can see he has his camera on. He is our newly hired planning supervisor. And so this prioritization effort is going to be important to the two of them as they work to get their feet under them and their new roles and help guide staff in improving the department. So before I keep going, I just wanted to give Scott a moment to introduce himself since he's a new face for you, and then I'll keep going.
Thank you, Jeff. I hope the council can hear me. I am very pleased to be here, excited about all of the things that are going on here in Albany. And so it's really a great city. I'm, I'm very excited about the work that we have. Lots of challenging work, but I'm up for the task, and I just wanted to tell you how pleased I am to be a part of your city and staff and hope to be of great service to you all.
Thank you, Scott. So you'll be seeing a lot more of Scott, obviously. He's, he's filling the vacancy left by David Martino, and Scott will be the staff liaison to the Planning Commission. All right, so I mentioned that we went through a code audit and a prioritization process back in, in two thousand seventeen, and we touched on that a little bit back in January when I provided a review of our department, our accomplishments, what are, what projects we were working on and some of the challenges that lie ahead. And I alluded to at that time that we're gonna come back and, and go through this process with you. So I'm just gonna jump straight to the list of topics or categories provided in Attachment B. And there's a, there's a listing here of fifteen topics, and while they're not in a specific order, I have tried to group the ones that I personally felt were of the highest priority towards the beginning of this. But again, I did not go through and put them in any specific order. What I am going to do today is share with you my opinion. It's only my opinion of what the top four priorities are. I'm gonna share with you what the Planning Commission felt the top four priorities are. We met with them last week and had this, had this conversation. And then I'm gonna turn it over to you for discussion, and then at, following this meeting, we don't have to do it live here on the, on the screen. What I'd like you to do is fill out that prioritization sheet that's provided as Attachment C and rank your personal priorities, one through fifteen, with one being what you think is the highest priority and fifteen being what you think is the lowest priority. And then please email that to me, and this is, this is all part of the public record. There's no, nothing happening behind closed doors. If anybody wants to see it, they can see it, but it just helps us have, keep it personal, at least at the end, but, but also have the benefit of the, the discussion time today. So again, I'm gonna touch on what I felt were the, my personal priorities, that what I think are the top four priorities. I'm not trying to impose my opinion on you. We want to hear your opinions. I should also note that we're gonna come back at the May tenth meeting, and we will share the results of this effort with you, and then we'll continue this discussion at the tenth. So this is step one. Step two is, is on the tenth. Apologize, I forgot to mention that. All right, so the first up one is housing affordability. And I want to note that housing affordability, although it was, was termed something else when we went to the, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have something?
I'm just, I'm just.
Okay. Wonderful. All right. So when we went through the, the audit process and prioritization process back in two thousand seventeen, housing affordability was really the top priority of the council and the Planning Commission. Because of all the competing priorities, legal requirements and things like that, we really were able to take a focused effort on that topic at that time. Rather, we, we took a step back and we took a much broader focus towards our improvements all the while with the direction of council being, don't lose track of, of the impacts on affordable housing with all of these areas where you're working. So it wasn't that we didn't do anything. It's just we weren't able to take a dedicated, focused look at it at that time. Since that time, a lot is, a lot has changed. And we've been able to, we've been able to accomplish a lot since that time. We brought our code into compliance in a number of different ways. We have new legislation that we're responding to. That's a, you know, a related topic to this. But we've also went through the process of a housing needs analysis, and we know more than we knew back in two thousand seventeen. And we know that we have a real problem. We've, we've shared statistics a number of times. We've heard it in all of our outreach efforts that we've done for our expanding housing options project. We are hearing from everywhere and seeing in all of our statistics that we have needs in our community, much like many communities in the state. And we, from a staff standpoint, we don't feel that we're in a position where we can defer a focused look in, in this area any longer. I mentioned in the description of this, of this topic that it may make sense to incorporate some sort of task force if this were to be pursued. And at the Planning Commission, we had some discussion about, well, what, what would this look like? And to be honest with you, it's really gonna, if, if we're gonna move on this topic, what it's gonna look like is gonna be defined by council. If there's a task force, it's gonna be a council decision. What's the scope of the task force? That's a council decision. What's the makeup of the task force? Council decision. But we do have a lot of resources available to us, both from the state in, in the form of the DLCD and then also from a group of people across the state that have been working to compile a library essentially of, of programs and efforts that have been undertaking to address housing affordability in other communities with varying degrees of success. So we can use these resources and learn from other people's experiences to evaluate alternatives and determine if they're appropriate or not for Albany, and then council would make an ultimate decision. So that's the type of evaluation that could occur as you focus on housing affordability. The second one on the list that I have there is mixed-use zones. And one of the, this is, the mixed-use zones are really the area that haven't been touched through our recent code amendment projects, whether that be the downtown code amendment project or a larger development code amendment project. And as we were working through those projects, it kept coming up that, you know, we, people would say, oh, we have a similar issue in the mixed-use zones. And we would say, well, that's outside the scope of what we're working on. We're gonna have to push that off to the side and deal with, deal with those later. And as we were talking about those, Bartno, and he was the planning manager and other staff, felt that it really might be short, short-sighted to just make those amendments as one-offs without considering the broader purpose and the effectiveness of the mixed-use zones. So one of the things that's unique about the mixed-use zones is they're, they're generally so sometimes smaller, they're more defined, they have very specific requirements. And so there's this opportunity that we should likely take to make sure that we have the right targets in these areas because they haven't been looked at, they haven't been refreshed like some of our other zones. And so in addition to making sure that there, the actual, you know, design standards or code requirements are current, there should, there's an opportunity to evaluate the zone purposes, the uses allowed, and, and where they should be applied. Just check my notes here one moment. Last thing I'll note is, just, just emphasize that we've worked a lot in all the other areas of code except for this one. So the, as I told the Planning Commissioner, or the Planning Commission, the engineer in me being really linear and liking to, like, wanting to finish one thing before I start another, I feel like this is an area of unfinished business as we've done the other ones. It would be nice to bring everything current and, and move on. So mixed-use zones were, were up there and at the top of my list. Comprehensive plan review. It's been all, there's been various updates to the comprehensive plan over time, and, and as you will recall reading in the, in the memo, really, the comprehensive plan is, is our community's strategic plan for how we're gonna grow, how we're gonna protect important resources, what, identifying what the needs in the community are. And through, through policies and goals and objectives, it sets that vision, much like you do with your, with the city's strategic plan. So it's a very important document, although you don't, don't really open it up and get into the details of it very often. So it's been updated in pieces over time. Traditionally, and even required in statute, the state is supposed to require communities to go through what's called periodic review and update comprehensive plans periodically, as the name implies. The state is no longer imposing that requirement, but it's still very important for cities to manage their comprehensive plan so that you are thinking strategically and ready and able to serve growth, protect important resources, and make sure what you're working towards is the current vision of your community. And so that's why the comprehensive plan is, is listed here towards the top as a high priority because it is a very important document. And we feel it's time that, that it needs to go through, go through an update. My fourth item is zone changes in response to the housing needs analysis and economic opportunities analysis. This is an effort that could be combined with that comprehensive plan review. It could also stand alone by itself. It's a much smaller project. But for efficiency's sake, if we are able to move on both of them, then it would make sense to combine them. Planning staff will be working with you and the community to, to go through this East I five study, or this area plan. And when, what part of that process is going to be identifying what zones, what specific zones are gonna be applied in what areas? And the good news is, is that we'll have these recently completed studies to tell us where the needs are to help inform where we might want to include certain, certain zones or determine if they're appropriate in certain areas. At the end of that process, we need to loop back and check and say, okay, well, did we meet the needs within those two studies completely? Or are there additional zone changes that should be considered elsewhere in the city in order to meet those needs? And we don't know the answer to that yet, but once that East I five area plan is complete, then that would be the time to ask those types of questions. So those are my top four priorities. I'm not gonna talk about any of the other projects. I just wanted you to have the benefit of that discussion. Quite honestly, if those were to be your top four priorities, that's a lot of work. That's gonna take us a couple of years to, to get through that. There's always opportunities to work in some of the smaller projects as we've done over the last couple of years, but from, from the big picture sense, that's, that's where we would lie. The Planning Commission went through their prioritization process. Their top four priorities were consistent with my top four priorities. Their number one priority was housing affordability. And then they had the comprehensive planning effort just ahead of the, just ahead of the mixed-use zones. So, but all those four were really grouped right at the top with the, with the rest spread out below. So they, they tended to have the same opinion as, as mine. Doesn't mean that's what yours needs to be. I'm just sharing the information. So with that, I will stop talking. I'll thank you for your time today. Let you discuss priorities as much or as little as you would like, and then please email me your sheets following the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Blaine. My question, did you provide a list of the Planning Commission's priorities, the results?
I did not. I didn't receive all of them until Friday, so I compiled them this weekend. I just got them in, in front of me. But number one was housing affordability. Number two was comprehensive plan. Number three was mixed-use zones, and number four was zone change. And then it jumped quite a bit of points to the next one.
Okay. Could you summarize it? Give us a summary. I greatly appreciate it so the counselors can take a look at that.
Gladly.
Thank you very much. Counselor, did you have a discussion for Director Blaine? Counselor Johnson? I think you were.
Okay, I've got it. Um, yeah, first thing I want to say is I, I think this has to be a kind of a joint effort with staff and the council because staff knows how hard, how hard each item is to do. You know, your, the zoning and whatever. And I noticed in one of the articles, it says, you know, how we want to make it simple for the client, you know, more streamlined. And so I just think that this has to be joint because what we might think might make it harder for staff. And so I really want to hear what staff thinks about it because they're the ones doing the work. I mean, I'm sure you'd all say, well, hey, let's do it the easiest way. You wouldn't say that. But I want to make sure that we do what is doable for staff. I mean, I do agree that some of the things should be streamlined, the zone, zone changes, things like that, or review types and things like that. My, as you saw in my list, I don't, mine's totally different from the planning because I think in a different way. And so I just think that we have to keep staff in mind as, when we make our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor, may I respond real momentarily?
Please do. And then after that, Counselor Kupcinski's next.
Great. So thank you, Counselor Johnson, for the feedback there. And thinking of staff, we always, we always appreciate that. And it brings up a point that I should have made in my presentation, which was the items on this list are items to evaluate. So it doesn't mean that because you say, do, you know, I, I'm just going to pick a random letter, H, whatever H is. You said, H is my highest priority. Let's look at that. It doesn't mean that you're committed to doing it. It just means, yes, that makes sense as an area we should evaluate and talk about and, and, and get information and, and, and pursue as a prod, pursue as a potential project. There's certainly some of these that are just very clearly either a project or not. And then there's other ones that are going to be more evaluation in nature, which really gets to the point you were making. So thank you for making that.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Blaine. Is Counselor Kaptansky ready?
Yes, yes. Director Blaine, it's funny you mentioned item H. That is the item I have a small discussion about right now on the temporary placement of manufactured homes and RVs. I'm wondering if there was any consideration to possibly, maybe I'm overthinking it, dovetailing that in with the affordable housing because I think that's how that may be used down the road for families or people in need of some homes. And we've got some limit, severe limitations on that being allowable. So I'm wondering if that could be part and parcel of that conversation for the affordable, affordable homes as opposed to a standalone. That's all.
I would, I would say that that's a good suggestion. I'd also say that we're already going to be working in the manufactured home section of the code as part of our expanding housing options project in the packet that you have. So if there was some low-hanging fruit in this, as, as the discussion has continued over the summer about that housing options project, maybe I'll even pick it up a little bit sooner. That's not a big scope item. It's just requires a little bit of discussion. So good suggestion.
So I had something on that right there as well. I received a call from a gentleman expressing concern about some legislation that was passed or possibly being passed that people couldn't park, a person that's displaced from housing park for unlimited amount of time or a period of time. How does that affect the consumer that has an RV or that has a family that is going through a rough time right now? So somebody that's classified as unhoused or homeless can park for a period of time. And then somebody that has a residence that uses their RV for temporary housing for someone, are they going to be applied the same? Or how's that work? How do you see that working?
That's beyond me. I'm not going to be able to answer that question for you. I'll just note that there's going to be differences in rules between parking in the right-of-way and parking on private property. So that, that'll, that'll depend a lot on the circumsta, the circumstances will, will dictate that necessary response. But unfortunately, I don't have the background in, in either of those to give you an, an honest reply.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, anyone else have something for the Director? Counselor Olson?
Oh, I'm just putting on a sweater.
Okay.
Counselor Smith had her hand up.
Counselor Smith, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, I was just going to comment that I, the topic of temporary use of an RV is dealt with in the municipal code rather than the development code. Right now it's spelled out what the limits are and where parking is allowed.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any other counselors have something they want to contribute? So Director, what would you like our responses to use just after this meeting? Do we, we have a couple of days?
If you could get them to me by the end of the week, that would be helpful. So then I can prepare my council memo and submit it on next Tuesday is when I have to have that downstairs. I keep the boss happy.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Can, can we commit to getting that to them before the end of the week, Council?
Mine's in.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right. Next agenda item, I'm going to go back to the agenda and it is the city services fee update. Peter Trotein, Sean Park, and Director Jaeger, we'll be talking between 12th, page 12 through 15. It's more informational, then we'll go from there. So.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to go on record as saying the boss is always happy. So since June of 2019, I feel like we've been talking a lot about the 2021 to 23 biennium. And it's, it's very close to us now. But in the course of talking about it, we've also talked about the shortfalls that we anticipate in the next biennial budget. And in September of 2020, you'll remember that council authorized the construction of a vehicle, as I liked to use the analogy I used. After, after we reviewed cost containment measures and alternate sources of revenue to try to address that budget shortfall in the next biennium. You'll remember too, that in October of 2020, we engaged Deb Gollardi, whom, with whom we've worked before, to conduct a fee study and an options analysis. And then she came out and presented the study. The study was completed in March of this year. It included similar options and rates in, in other Oregon cities. And on March 24th, council reviewed the options with varying approaches to residential multifamily, commercial and industrial customers. And council selected a fee option based on the number of units for residential and multifamily customers and meter size for commercial and industrial customers. And since then, work has progressed based on, on that selection. Tonight, Sean Park will give you an update on the work that we've been doing on a low-income assistance program that will be a component of that city services fee. And when I say will be, let me take a pause here and reassure anybody that's wondering, is it the council has not made a decision to adopt a city services fee? We're just still constructing this fee so that we'll be ready and we'll have it if you decide that we need it. Sean, as I mentioned, will give you an update on the low-income assistance program. Try as I might, I couldn't find a, a good acronym to use for, for that. So I'm using the full name. And he'll talk a little bit about the next decision that council will have to make, which will be deciding on a base rate. And then we'll be talking a little bit about the outreach effort that we've put into, to place and what you heard a little bit about on Friday in the Friday email. And we'll have a chance to answer any questions that you might have. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sean.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Your city team has been conducting research on low-income utility assistance across other Oregon cities. The purpose of this effort is to inform both a temporary short-term provision made for low-income assistance for the city services fee under discussion here, as well as a, a, a long-term view towards the potential expansion of the current low-income assistance program, which we currently have in our water utility. Our current low-income assistance program provides a credit of up to four units of water usage at no charge. The pre-unit charge is currently $4.60 or $18.40 per month for the four units. The number fluctuates, but we see between 120 and 200 participants in that program, depending on the time of year. What we're seeing across Oregon is that while eligibility requirements vary quite a bit, excuse me, we see an average of about a $25 a month rebate or assistance given for a water utility assistance across the state. And our long-term goal is to look at a, a permanent expansion of our own low-income assistance program within Albany. And I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on that so far regarding low income.
So, so this, go ahead, Counselor Kaptansky. Who was that? Who went? So, so this covers stormwater sewer and all the other ones, correct?
That is correct. What our research is focused on to date are, are low-income assistance that applies to water utilities, including stormwater and sewer. Some municipalities across the state run their own electric utilities, but we, for the purposes of our data, aren't considering those as kind of apples-to-oranges comparisons.
Counsel, Counselor Johnson, you have something?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Sean, when you say low income, what is the range that you're considering? What is low income?
The range that is considered right now is, allow me a moment to refer to the documentation on the program that we currently use.
Okay, sure.
Um, it's a senior citizen at a certain income level or disabled at a certain income level.
Not take into account someone that's lost their job or someone that doesn't have childcare and they have to stay at home.
That's correct.
City manager?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, that's correct. So it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer. In a true low-income assistance program, from what I could tell, would, would be eligible to a low-income person regardless of their age, status, or their disability status. And as we go through this process of looking at the city services fee, the thought has been raised that maybe as a long-term goal, as Sean said, we should revise our, our own program here to apply across the board and to revise the criteria so that they better, better serve low-income people of all, of, you know, of all, of all ages and all abilities.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was, my question was the amount that we're looking at. I mean, what, what do they consider low income? Is it like 10,000, 12,000, 5,000, 25,000?
We have a table on the cityofalbany.net website. It, it's a little bit too much information to convey in a, in a webcast here. We're happy to provide a link to that low-income assistance program website, which has the, there are three primary criteria, and there's a table there with family size and then the income that's calculated.
Okay, yeah, if you could send that, I think that'd, that'd help. Thank you.
I, I agree. That's a great idea. Okay, anything else, Counselor, would you like to ask? Okay, Director, excuse me, City Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just wanted to stress maybe foot-stomp something that Sean said. And that is that a change of this type is a pretty far-reaching change. So it's, when we're looking at the city services fee, which there's a certain amount of urgency with the city services fee, that would have to, we would have to develop a, a kind of a placeholder low-income assistance component. And then address, address the long-term revisions of low-income assistance on a, on a much broader basis. But you can imagine that when you start peeling the layers of the onion back and looking at the details, that will take quite a bit of time and effort.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Peter, for clarifying that we have both an acute, short-term we're looking into for low income as it relates specifically to the city services fee, as well as the long-term, for lack of a better term, overhaul of the overall city services, excuse me, low-income assistance program, utility-wide across the city. As mentioned earlier, the council made a decision in March to, they, they made a selection of a fee option, which was, it's essentially the machine. It's the calculator that dictates what a residential base rate is going to be. And then out from that flow, the various charges that go to multifamily, commercial and industrial customers. The other half of that equation is the, the residential base rate upon which that calculator hinges upon. So that the, the next decision point that council will have will be discussion at the May 10 work session regarding a fee rate, which is that residential base, base rate number.
Thank you. I think Counselor Johnson has, you have something else, Counselor Johnson? Okay. Any other counselor have any comments? Thank you so much, Sean. I really appreciate it. Anyone else?
My pleasure.
Mayor, a couple of quick words to, to finish this up about outreach. If you had noticed in your Friday email, Matt Harrington has composed a couple of pages that would provide some outreach to the public. They'll be available to, to anybody who goes to the city's website. We'll take steps to publicize those as much as we can. And it's a very dynamic campaign because you can imagine that as, as we go through the ARPA funding and CARES Act funding and the, the various variables that, that are affecting us right now, a lot of the times that the, the environment changes. But as we talked about before, the city services fee is meant to address a long-term chronic imbalance in our budget. So that is something that we need to take the time and effort to, to communicate to people and provide plenty of examples of that. So I'd also welcome any questions and Matt would welcome any questions as well on that outreach effort.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah. It's not so, oh, it's not so much of the, the outreach, Peter, I guess. And I know you've probably said this a million times, but for the 21, is it 21, 22 budget? What do you project the shortfall to be? Approximate?
It's kind of hard to.
Approximately, you'll hear about this in our upcoming first budget committee meeting on May 4th. Right now, we're looking at an approximate shortfall of about $5 million.
Okay. And so. Yeah, that will, that will, I think, help tell, you know, us explain to people if they ask, you know, okay, this is our shortfall that, you know, we're projecting. And I think that would help. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. And you see on the chart that Sean has put up that that's why you hear the, the figure $9. Because if you look to the far right under projected gross revenue, that would yield about 2.8 million a year.
Thank you. I see you, Counselor Bertolomini. Okay, Counselor Bertolomini, you're next up.
I mean, yes, I was just wondering how the, the communication was happening besides a posting on the city website? How are people being informed that this information is available?
Well, as, as you can imagine, we're just now starting this. So we sent that out on Friday. We'll use every avenue that we can. If there's any opportunity for public communications about it, we'll, we'll talk about it. And I would invite Matt Harrington to comment a little bit on the rest of the outreach plan.
Yeah, so as Peter noted, we sent that information out to you, the council, to have a chance to preview it before it went out to the public. Our intention is that the information that we've put together in those pages is our baseline content that provides factual information about the city's budget situation and what services could be retained if a city services fee was to be implemented. That is certainly not the, the entirety of an outreach plan. So our goal with that content is as you start moving forward with constituents is that you can point back to that information, such as the question that Counselor Johnson just asked about the amount of the shortfall. That is on those pages. So moving forward, we intend on using all of our outlets, social media, the newspaper, other media outlets, and then outreach that we can safely do during this time, such as with the Chamber of Commerce and other civic groups and organizations. So we'll use all the tools at our disposal, but that is kind of our next phase is to develop, to develop that calendar and plan of outreach.
And Mayor, may I draw your attention to the, the column on the far right and the three asterisks at the top? And you see that down at the bottom, it says that projected gross revenue does not include administrative for low-income assistance program costs. So as you can imagine, to create this fourth utility, if you will, for lack of a, a better description, that they will share, the city services fee will share in the cost of running that, that program. And that we estimate it right now between 200 and 300,000 a year. And then the low income, obviously, if we are going to provide a low-income assistance program to, to people, that money will have to come from somewhere. So right now, the way it works in Albany's program is it works with a 35- So right now, the way it works, uh, in Albany's program is it works with a 35 cent surcharge on, on the other ratepayers. So basically, ratepayers who are not low-income, uh, help to support those that, that are low-income.
Alright, thank you for that explanation. I have, uh, Counselor Kupczynski first and then Counselor Smith. And Counselor, like after them.
Thank you. Uh, I presume that we'd be considering, uh, city bridges and possibly an insert into the, uh, uh, other utility bills like water bill or something like that as part of the outreach.
That is, uh, those are all parts of our, our toolkit that we-
Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Well, I, I read the materials thoroughly over the weekend and I want to recommend that the other counselors do the same. Um, if you have any questions, let Matt know, uh, that something might be missing or should be reworded. I didn't find any fault with any of it. It's very straightforward. It's, um, objective, uh, lays things out the way they are, answers a lot of questions before you have the opportunity to think of them. So uh, I'm really pleased with it so far and, and I think it will be a, a great tool for us to point constituents to, people who have questions.
Thank you for that, Counselor Smith. Counselor Olson, I believe, was next.
Uh, yes, uh, does the low income situation, is that based on a sliding scale or is it just above a certain level or, and below a certain level?
The current-
Go ahead, Seth. Go ahead, Sean.
Uh, thank you. The, the current program is not a sliding scale. It, it uses, uh, income, household income based on the number of people in the household and that they either do or do not qualify.
Uh, I think that's unfortunate. I know it's much harder to have a sliding scale, but I think it'd be a lot fairer. And I, I could conscientiously, uh, support a higher level for the, uh, for the top level if that were the case.
Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Therefore, a higher in, higher total income. But, um, if, if it's not a sliding scale, I have a hard time, uh, making the, uh, charge very high.
So Matt, thank you for that. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Novak was next.
Yes, thank you. Um, I was just wondering if someone might review for me the main drivers of the long-term chronic imbalance?
I, certainly we can do that. It might take a little while. Um, and we're gonna, Counselor Novak, we will talk about that, uh, on the, the May 4th budget committee meeting. I, I want to remind counselors that we're building a budget right now that is not counting on this city services fee. So we are building in, uh, $5 million worth of service level reductions. Um, and some of those reductions have already been made. Uh, you know, you're familiar with that in the Parks Department, in the Police Department, um, and a little bit in the library as well. So, um, there, the, the, the cause or the, the root cause of the imbalance is the fact that uh, measures five in 47 and 50 in the early 90s capped property tax revenue at a growth of 3%. And meanwhile, the cost of operations is going up at upwards of 5, 6, 7%. So, you know, you'll remember back to your, your high school geometry, two lines like that don't meet. They just get further and further and further apart. And that's where the imbalance is.
Uh, excuse me, Sean. Counselor Olson?
Uh, yes, uh, we had this discussion two years ago with our constituents. And we were able to, uh, point out the high cost of PERS and how the state is, has shoved that off onto cities, counties and others. And also the high cost of, uh, health insurance. And are we going to be able to get, have a figure as to what those uh, loads are this time? Or do we just have to kind of talk in general about high cost?
No, we, we will certainly be able to talk about that, but we are approaching budget talk at this point. And, you know, we ought to wait for the budget committee to, to have that conversation.
So when we have that conversation, are we going to be able to talk about percentage numbers and that type of thing or just in general?
Yes, we will be, yes, we will be able to talk about percentages and absolutes, all kinds of numbers.
Okay. Now, that, that is instructive when I talk to people that way and, and they grind their teeth, but, uh, they can see that it's something that, uh, with our present state of affairs, if I could use that as a pun, that, um, it's a difficulty that we have to find somewhere around.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Uh, Sean, go ahead with you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One thing that I wanted to, uh, just circle back to before I, I, I finished speaking this evening was that the table that you see on your screen here regarding, uh, the, the base rate structure, starting at $1 up to $10 and then the, the projected revenues and how those are applied to the various customers is going to be the topic of conversation, uh, for your May 10th session. And I'll make sure you get this information, uh, well before then.
Sean, would you provide the next slide too, just so I could see where the cities are that, uh, you looked at?
That it, Sean?
Yeah. Uh, yes, this is, uh, the current, um, the comparisons that were made in the Gallardi study, uh, used the data that was gathered from the cities you see on the screen here, uh, to compare base rate structures with other cities in Oregon compared to what we might be looking at for Albany. And as Peter mentioned in our, in our revenue table, um, we're looking at between $8 and $9 to match the current shortfall, um, which is rated, you know, around the bottom of, of the, the median, uh, across the state.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Uh, so now with, uh, business from the councils next on the agenda. So counsel, Ray Kupczynski is first on my screen.
Yes, basically, uh, going back to the, uh, two speakers about the enhanced enforcement area. Uh, I'm in full concurrence with considering, uh, removing that. I'll freely admit that I was part of the uh, council at the time when it was, uh, submitted and, and voted for it. But seeing how it is basically, uh, not being used, not being enforced, uh, it's to me almost like, uh, for lack of a better description, a dangling participle. And I would have no qualms in, uh, bringing it forward to, uh, an upcoming council meeting to consider just removing that language and take it off the books.
I'll second that motion if it is such a motion.
It's so, when we get there, gentlemen, when we get there. Counselor, Counselor Olson, you're next up. Is that it, Counselor Kupczynski? That's it. Counselor Olson?
Oh, I say, I, I agree with Ray on that. I would like to see that removed.
Thank you. Is that it, sir?
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Smith, you're next.
I would like to see a report from the Police Department on the, the statistics related to the law enforcement and enhanced, enhanced law enforcement area.
Okay.
Great.
Excellent. So is that it, Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Bartholomew?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Um, just a couple of things. Um, the, um, Speaker, Ms. Kennedy, uh, you know,
Kennedy.
That, just-
Nikki.
Just want to say that, you know, we can't tell people where to live or what to build. And, um, you know, our neighborhoods are changing. Um, it doesn't mean that it's good or bad, but, uh, yeah, it changes neighborhoods and, and unfortunately, you know, things happen, but we can't tell people not to come, not to build here that are from Corvallis or even Portland, out of state, anywhere, you know? Uh, it's just like, we can't tell businesses, you know, that they, that they can't come, that type of a thing. So, um, I think that's, that's one thing. And then I, I also agree that if the statistics that we heard about having one incident in three years or whatever, uh, with the enhanced area, I'd be for removing it too. I was, I wasn't forward, forward in, in the first place as far, as far as I recall, but, um, I don't, I mean, the people that come down, you, I mean, they have to have basically a reason to come down right now. And I don't know if that's even being, uh, focused on or watched or whatever. So, um, I'd be for removing it unless the statistics from the Police Department come back and say, oh no, there's been, uh, 100 of them and this type of a thing. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one thing.
Excuse me, sir?
I'm sorry, Counselor Novak.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Um, I, I just want to say that I support seeing what sort of statistics we have with regard to that language and how it's been enforced. And I am, I'm not sure I'm clear on something because I, I, I'm, maybe I misunderstood. They said something about this language makes it sound not welcoming in our community. And, um, and there was something in a letter about how people could get in trouble for making too much noise for something is, you know, as no big thing as that. And that made me recall, this past summer, I had an appointment at the, um, Chamber of Commerce and there was a fellow on one of those little benches right outside the chamber door, you know, across from the carousel. And he was yelling at the top of his lungs as I approached the chamber. And he continued to yell at the top of his lungs for about 45 minutes. And to my mind, that's not a small thing because, you know, it's the middle of summer. We had people out walking our streets. And to me, I don't think it's right that anyone should be free to yell at the top. Now, mind you, I'm not casting aspersions. This gentleman needed help. You know, it's not, that's not accepted behavior. And my point is, I don't think it should be allowable. I don't think, I don't think that's okay. I don't think that makes our town a welcoming place to ordinary citizens who are going about their business. I certainly found it, you know, concerning. And yet no one did anything. And that's, uh, I just think that's not okay. So if this language in this thing that isn't being enforced, if that has anything to do with, with, um, maybe taking some action when individuals need help, um, as opposed to just letting them be there yelling like that, um, I, I would be in favor of somebody doing something. I don't think that, that creates a town that is welcoming. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think Counselor Smith had a follow-up.
I do. I would like to recommend in the interim between this meeting and the next, when, whenever we get the report from the Police Department, that the counselors read that section of the code to find out what is prohibited and what is allowed. Um, that would be very useful information to have.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't trust your memories.
After 50, I stopped doing that.
End of that.
Are you, are you have anything else?
No.
Um, I, I just had one thing. Um, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, I received a call from a mother that informed me that her daughter was in ICU and that, um, there were some practices at a church she attended that led to possible exposure to, um, COVID-19. I immediately informed our, uh, city manager and, um, emergency manager. He made phone calls and confirmed it was being, it's been looked at by OHA. Well, this afternoon, that mother called me and she's went to the hospital this afternoon to turn off life support for her daughter. And so a 43-year-old young lady that lives in our city, that's a resident of our city, was exposed at this Easter event. And now she's, her mother's turning off life support. So I would ask people, even though you may not believe the, the virus is real, even though you believe that it can't happen to you, um, I've lived it firsthand with my mother-in-law, with clients and with a woman I've never met, but I cried for her today, with her today. Please be responsible and protect other people from you if you are a carrier or you've been exposed. And other than that, uh, I'll turn it over to the City Manager. Uh, Peter, it's your time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just two things for you. First of all, Gina Jaeger had to depart, but she wanted me to pass on to you that the link to the draft budget for 2021 to 23 will be passed out or distributed to you tomorrow by email. Uh, and then the, the second thing, I wanted to set the stage for a request from Chief Harden. Chief Harden has a, a, a request of you all for a policy waiver. And we heard in the beginning of this council meeting about affordable housing or housing affordability. You know how tight the housing market is? You know that Chief Harden moved here recently. Uh, and you know that she has the need to look for, uh, a different house, uh, to take care of all of her animals. So, um, I'm going to let her make her own case, but after she talks, I want to give you my own recommendation as well. So Chief, over to you.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Uh, good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, this is a, a little bit of an unusual request, but I think it's kind of the sign of the times. Some of you already know, um, I moved from Washington State where we had a farm, uh, up there with alpaca and a number of other small critters. And at the time that I took the job down here, I had anticipated that, uh, Shannon, my other half would stay north. Uh, and we would do kind of a long-distance thing as I, uh, completed my career here. Well, uh, the job at OSU PD opened up, uh, and she competed against a number of people and won that job over at the university. Uh, so, uh, when I moved here last year, I, uh, bought a house in North Albany and thought that was the, um, a perfect spot. It's a great house. Uh, really love living there. Uh, but it is a third of an acre and not anywhere set up for alpacas and critters. And so when Shannon got the job down here, we started looking for some property, uh, within, uh, the city limits of Albany and within the urban growth boundary of Albany as required by, I think, the city charter. Uh, and we've been outbid twice and outpriced, uh, on multiple occasions, uh, because we really need, uh, three to five acres to make this work. Uh, this last weekend, found a great place that's just outside the city limits, uh, of Albany. Uh, it's, my commute actually would be less from this place than in North Albany. Uh, and so I'm seeking a one-time waiver of that residency, uh, requirement for myself, uh, to live just outside the city in the southeast portion of the, of the town. And I wanted to let you know that I do plan on keeping the house in North Albany. Uh, it's a great investment and plan on having some relatives, probably an, uh, elderly mother-in-law potentially live there. Uh, it is a great place and I plan to hang on to that. So I'm asking for this one-time waiver of, of that requirement, uh, to move just outside. Um, as Peter and I discussed earlier too, uh, one of the things that was a, a great consideration when I bought the house in North Albany is if we were to have a major earthquake, what would that mean for my availability to get to City Hall and to the Police Department, which is on the Lynn County side? This negates that, uh, and wouldn't have any issues getting into the city to perform that work. So I'm respectfully asking for an exemption for that residency. So we can move our animals down here, uh, and still be very much invested in the city, just a little bit outside. And hopefully one day it'll get annexed, but it's just outside.
And Mayor and Council, one clarification, that is not part of the charter, as Chief Harden said. It's actually a resolution from the early 90s that, uh, was passed before the days of email, before the days of social media, before the days of, uh, the kind of conference that you and I, we are having right now. So, um, I, I would like to recommend that you, uh, grant, uh, Chief Harden's request for this waiver. I think it's in the best interest of the city.
Counsel, uh, thank you, Peter. Uh, Counselor Smith has had her hand up.
I would, I would move to, um, grant the waiver and I, I think what, what put the frosting on it for me was the, um, tantalizing notion that she wants to be annexed.
Second.
Welcome to Southeast Albany.
So I, I heard a second from Counselor Kupczynski. Any other discussion?
Um, I just-
Go ahead, Counselor, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah. I would put in the cart before the horse. I mean, I know it needs to be done now. And I guess maybe when the issue came up, what, a couple of years ago? Um, someone wasn't complying. And I, maybe we should have taken care of it then. To, you know, if we're going to change it or, or whatever. Um, I guess I would ask the council, are you, are you wanting, are you willing to go ahead and change that? Um, what is it, ordinance for?
Resolution. Resolution.
Resolution, uh, so that we don't require the directors to live in the city. I mean, I, I think this is probably a good time to find out if we're willing to do that. I think now is the time so that we don't set a precedent and say, okay, well, the chief can do this and someone, someone can't. I mean, I am for maybe- I mean, I am for maybe just doing away with the resolution. I mean, I'm not against Chief Harden going here, and if I heard the word annexation, I like that. That's the key word, chief. But I just wondered what the rest of the council thinks about, you know, bringing up the resolution. Okaying this maybe tonight and then getting rid of it.
So at this, address the chief's request. And we can have the staff kind of put something together for us really for later on to adjust the resolution.
I mean, I'd be for it if that, if we could do that.
So, so we'll direct staff to do that. So
There is a motion and a second on the
Yeah. Well, discussing.
Did you call for the vote? Aye.
There's a aye.
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 Those opposed? Same sign? So motion passes? And so the chief go by her home?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And City Manager, is that all you have for us today?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
So the, the meeting's adjourned and we start the next meeting in exactly too soon. It was supposed to start at 5:15. So I recommend everyone taking a bio break, getting a cup of coffee and see you back here. The next link.
Can we just stay here on this link?
Different, it's a different meeting, Counselor Olson. You have to log out and log into the other meeting.
Thank you.
See you in a few.
I'll try and find it.
I think it's an Allison's email or, I think it's an Allison's email.
Okay.